Is that right?
Correct.
Are you putting interior plumbing?
No.
You will have electrical?
Yes, eventually, not right away. Right now, I'm just trying to get the building up, get the floor full wood, and then, as I save more money, I'll eventually insulate it, electrical, and all of that.
Do you intend to heat it? So probably do that going electric heater or something like that?
Not currently, no.
We ask you these questions not because we're nosy. I mean, they are nosy, I'm not silly. But I have to write a decision if we decide yes or if we decide no. And these kinds of things are typically asked and then repeated in our decisions so that if any member of the public wants to check on it, they can go in and read.
Yeah.
Okay?
Makes sense.
Where are you planning on putting the driveway for?
The driveway is already there. It's kind of like an L-shaped driveway, and it's going to land right along the edge of the driveway.
So looking at your plan...
So my driveway currently comes in like this and goes right over like that.
Okay, I didn't know if you needed to make a cut here.
No.
You know, plus with the well right there.
The well actually isn't there. The well's way back over here somewhere.
Wow, okay.
That's typical in Carver.
Yeah.
Well, you have to do a lot of, like, tree clearing?
Nope, everything's cleared, flat. It's pretty much ready to go, so...
How far away from the house would you say it is?
60 feet, probably.
Is there a reason why you didn't want it closer to the house?
No, just the way it kind of worked out with my driveway, it seemed like the best place to put it.
Are you planning on putting on any outside lighting?
I may down the road put like one outside light by the door you walk in.
Okay.
But currently, no, because there won't be any electricity or anything.
Is the antique car able to be driven at this point?
Yes.
So if I vote yes, will you let me?
You can't drive it, though.
Right, I saw that.
Can't drive it, yeah. He's very careful. It's his baby. And you told me you were going to put a four-wheeler in there, and what else?
A lawnmower. And garden tools, stuff like that.
Just one door?
Yep.
And the two vehicles, the car and the four-wheeler, right?
Correct.
How high is the door?
10 feet.
So one garage door and one back?
Access door.
Yeah.
So the door is going to be almost as tall as the tallest part of the building?
Yes.
And approximately how wide?
The garage door?
Yeah.
8 feet.
8 feet.
Now, it appears as if all corners of the proposed garage are behind the corner of the house that's closest to the road. Would everybody agree with me on that?
Yes.
Yes.
It looks like it, yeah.
So we have to be careful. We can't... Rarely, rarely, rarely do we ever allow any construction to go up that's ahead or in front of a house.
Okay.
It's got to be in back.
Okay.
Yours is...
It's roughly about even.
Roughly about even. You've got one, because of the angle of your house, you've got one corner that's... that makes this construction in back.
I can slide it back if necessary.
Is there going to be a driveway leading up to this?
Yeah, there's already an existing driveway.
There's already an existing driveway. I didn't see it on the map, so...
He pointed it out to Jim. He said it comes in here and kind of turns out like...
I see with the dotted line.
Yeah.
And you have another door in the back of the building, is that true? You have the big one in the front.
Yes.
And you have a door in the back? It looks like there's a door in the back. Would you agree with me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there may be a second door.
There should be.
I mean, are the garage... is the garage door going to face the road?
No.
Or is it... It's going to face your house?
It's going to face my house, yes.
Yeah, so the garage door is going to be here, the back door is going to be here.
Where's the back door? Here.
No, here.
No, no, that's the...
Garage door.
That's the main door.
Yeah.
And the back door is where?
Over here, because look. So turn this.
Yep.
That is here, that is here, and what you're actually going to see from the road is this.
The windows and the side.
When you look from the road.
You actually won't even be able to see it from the road because it's wooded along the road.
Way back, okay.
So the rear is here?
Yep.
Front?
Yep.
Okay. Existing driveway.
So we did pull in right there?
Yep, right. Okay. Where do you keep your other car? Or cars?
Currently, right now, it is in a carport, but it's kind of weather still, so...
What, your regular car is out in the weather?
Oh, my regular car.
Yeah, I was asking...
It's currently parked in the driveway.
Okay, and you have what, one other car?
Yeah, my wife's car and my car.
So you... between the two of you, you have one car. Is that what you're saying?
No, she has a car.
And you have a car.
I have a car, and then I have the classic car as well.
Right, and so those cars right now are being parked in the driveway?
Correct.
Okay. So she must be anxious for you to get the antique car out of the way.
She doesn't really mind.
Ah, you have a good woman. What else do you want to tell us?
I mean, that's really it. That's what my intentions are.
Right, this 1,200 square feet, 700 square feet is allowed as of right, so you're 500 square feet over.
Okay.
Just a little bit under double.
Yep.
Do you need all that?
I could use it, for sure.
I know you could use it, but you really need it? I mean, you're making space for one car.
Yep.
And you're making space for a four-wheeler and a lawnmower.
Yep.
Not exactly big items.
No, I understand, but I also...
What we try to do so that you understand is we try to minimize the request of a petitioner when he or she or it is beyond what the bylaws allow. So if someone comes in and says, "Okay, well, we want 1,500 square feet," we ask what it's for and what's going to be in there and the size and so forth. And if it seems to us that it's a little much and that the petitioner is really asking for extra space, more than space that he or she or it needs...
Yeah.
Then we try to cut that back a little so that the bylaw is not violated as much.
Okay.
And what you're asking for is us to violate the bylaw.
Yeah.
You're asking us to break the bylaw. You're asking us to break the law, the local law, right? So I know you would like 1,200 square feet, but how much do you think you can get away with and get everything in that you want in? Remember when your wife sent you out to the doghouse? You know, you're going to have to be in the garage.
Her car's probably going to end up in there along with my classic car.
Okay.
So that's kind of what I'm anticipating.
Okay, so it's probably a garage that's going to use for two vehicles on the road.
Right, one that will be in there full-time and the other probably sporadically.
Does anyone have any thoughts about the size?
I do not. No.
No.
We've seen many of these. People have a lot of stuff.
I agree.
What does all this mean for you?
For me, he doesn't need any setback variances, he doesn't need height, he's not doing a second floor. I mean, there's a lot, and like I said, we've seen many of these, and 1,200 square feet is pretty standard for what people are coming in now asking for on a detached. As a board, we've even discussed, you know, asking the town to possibly make the size standard larger.
Going to have an attic of sorts up there?
No.
No climb-up?
No.
I'll get to you. Okay. Is there anything else that you'd like to say?
I don't believe so.
And waving at me.
He's my son.
That's fine, but I'll let him.
When I expire, he's going to need room for two more classic cars.
Nice. Nice. Aw.
What kind of cars you got?
'56 Chevy and a '37 Fiat.
Wow.
Where'd you get the '37 Fiat?
New Hampshire, about 10 years ago.
What kind of Buick?
That's...
Wow.
That's quite a car.
Yeah.
It's beautiful.
How many miles you got on it?
10.
10 miles?
Yeah, it does a lot.
It's there to be looked at, not to be driven, right?
It's just decoration.
They'll zoom fixes them up and then they sit.
I love it. I love it.
And what is your name?
Carl Anderson.
Nice to have you with us tonight, Carl.
Thank you.
And I know he appreciates it too, right?
I do.
Any other member of the public like to be heard on this particular petition? I see no hands. One hand.
Yes.
Two hands. Yes, sir?
I'm his neighbor across the street.
What's your name?
Joseph Biter.
Joseph, we have to get this down for the record. Joseph what?
Biter.
And you're the neighbor on the same side of the street?
Right across the street.
Right across the street. What do you think about this?
It's his land.
So you don't have... you don't have any objections?
No.
Okay.
No. We got the letter in the mail that said it was a hearing, just wanted to come check it out, see what's going on.
Oh, we're happy to have you. We like company.
Yeah.
Bring pizza the next time.
Same.
Yes, sir?
I have a question.
And your name?
Reggie Newcomb.
Yes, Reggie.
I just want to see him screw himself. He said he didn't know what the height of the building was. He said he was guessing with 10 foot four.
Yes.
You guys have zoning bylaws as far as the height of the thing, so I want to see him put a building up that's 15 feet high and then he's got to come back for another variance.
Well, what we do is we... when we vote on this, and if we vote approval, then we will set certain conditions like no wider than, no taller than, no bigger than, that kind of stuff. And you'll hear that in a couple of minutes.
And that's also why I'm interested in getting the specs.
Yeah.
Just to make sure.
You have the specs with you right now?
I do, I believe.
I'll have the vice chair take a look at this.
I don't know if you guys have this, but I mean, this is what it's got for numbers across the top, width, height.
10'4".
Yeah. Yep. Thank you. Anything else you want to show us?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think you guys have everything.
Good. Does anyone up here have any further questions, comments, or...
I do not.
Or anything else that they want to add? Ms. Dahl?
No.
And you said there's a tree line?
Yes.
So it's not going to be seen from the road anyways?
Yeah, that was kind of the reason to put it off to the side of the driveway like that instead of...
So the tree line is in the front, out by Rochester Road?
Correct.
Okay.
I figured it was kind of like out of sight, out of mind kind of thing.
We all have our little things, and Mr. Barrington's thing is trees. He likes trees. He's our tree guy. And if there's a question that has to be raised insofar as trees are concerned, he's the one that's going to raise his hand first. Have you been satisfied, Mr. Barrington?
I'm satisfied, yes.
Okay, and I think everybody else said they were too.
Yes.
So do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have some findings that I would like the board to consider. Everybody ready?
Yep.
I suggest that the board find that the benefits of the proposed use outweigh any detrimental impacts on the town and the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and the proposal in relation to that site. Do I hear a motion to adopt that finding?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Aye.
Any discussion?
Oh, sorry.
No discussion?
No.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Another finding. I suggest that the board find that the proposed construction is not substantially more detrimental than any existing non-conforming structure in the neighborhood.
Some moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we have to have these findings. These findings underpin the decision that we're about to make right now. Do I hear a motion to grant a special permit under Article 5, Section 5300 and sections following and Section 5221 of the Town of Carver bylaws?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So now you have your project approved. But there will be conditions, so don't go away yet. And we'll do these one by one. Subject to the plans and drawings of record. Everybody agree on that?
Yep.
Yep.
We're going to do these all at once rather than one by one because we're at that minute. It will be... so it's going to be subject to the specs, right?
Yeah, so you'll get a copy to the permit.
Planning department. Planning department.
Yes.
Is that what we say it is, specs? Yes?
That's what I call them, yeah. They're called specs.
And there will be no plumbing? Right? Everybody good with that one?
Yes.
No interior plumbing? Because if you... what if he wants to put a, you know, outdoor...
A spigot? Okay. No heating?
No.
And electrical will be... are you going to wire it for inside electric or just outside?
Probably both inside and out down the road. One of the...
So we don't have to write anything about that. The height will be not greater than 10 feet 4 inches. And you're going to be using the existing driveway.
Correct.
And the door is going to be... it's going to be one door, 8 feet wide, about 10 feet high.
Yeah.
Right? And I think that's all I had with my notes. Does anyone have anything else that they want to add to these conditions? And I'll go over them one more time before we vote.
What did... I'm sorry, what did you write down for the height? 10?
10'4".
Should we give them up to 11? It's only 6 inches.
8 inches.
It's only 8 inches.
What do you think about that? You want another 8 inches?
If you want, I mean, it is what it is. I'm not changing it.
Height not greater than 11 feet. Okay? Anybody have anything else they want to add?
No.
So I'm going to go through this again. We'll vote collectively. Subject to the plans, drawings, and specs of record. The height will not be greater than 11 inches.
Feet.
I mean, 11 feet, excuse me.
Pretty small car. Pretty matchbox.
Get a little matchbox car. One door, 8 feet wide, 10 feet high, not greater than. And you're going to be using the existing driveway. There will be no interior plumbing or heating. There will be electrical when you're ready.
Yeah.
Okay? And I think that that's it. Does anyone have anything?
I'll make a motion to adopt those conditions.
To adopt those conditions?
Yeah.
Yes. Do I hear a second?
Second?
Yes. Should I add anything in there about trees?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I will write this decision within the next couple of days.
Okay.
And Ms. Melo now has a little speech that she wants to make. This is directed at you specifically.
So once the decision goes back to Town Hall here, there's a 20-day appeal period. After that appeal period, you can pick up the decision. You're going to go down to the Registry of Deeds in Plymouth, file the decision with the registry, bring the paperwork back here, and you'll be able to get your building permit. Okay? So give it... you usually have them in by Monday, Tuesday. So count Tuesday, yep, start counting 20, 20 days from there. If you haven't heard from the Town Hall after an appropriate amount of time, then give them a call and see if it's ready.
Yeah, this time next week. I'm almost positive that they'll be there for you.
Okay.
Okay. So congratulations.
Congratulations.
It's nice to meet you and your dad.
Thank you, thank you.
Keep those cars safe.
Have a good night.
Good night, too.
Okay. One down, two to go. Next case is Case 1-18-0-R. The petitioner is Jeffrey Merritt. Is Jeffrey here tonight? Hello there.
Good evening.
Seeking a special permit pursuant to Sections 2245(c), 5221, and 5300 and Sections following of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located in 2B Andrews Point Road. I've seen you before. Have you come before us before?
For a different spot, but yes.
Yeah. Assesses map one... you're still very handsome, by the way. Assesses map one lot 18-0-R, so is to construct a 924-square-foot detached garage. So this is a little bit smaller than the one that we just had, and it's going to have a playroom and storage area. A playroom and storage area. No antique cars here, right? Seven... again, 700 square feet is allowed as of right, so you're 9... you're 224 feet over what's allowed by right. All of this in a residential agricultural district. So if you could assume the hot seat for a minute? And I am going to ask you to make your presentation and tell us what you'd like to do and what you want to use it for and what your plans are and all that good stuff. Although we have a pretty good idea already.
Sure. So we're planning on, like I said, 924-square-foot garage.
Detached, right?
Detached garage. It's six... I've heard some of the other questions. So it's about 50 feet from the existing house, and the reason for that is that's where the driveway sits now, so there's no real alteration to the driveway or trees or anything like that. That's already all taken care of. And as we talk about the placement of the garage, on the east of the east side, so I'd say the lowest part on the plan, that's all covered by trees or... so if people drive down the common driveway, you really don't see the side of the garage. It's all pine and fir trees. And then on the backside of the garage, it's all woods all the way back up to Lakeview. So it is hidden pretty well there. And so the reason for the 924 square feet is our existing house where we live now, which is quite an hour time room, is there's no foundation under it and there's no attic or anything like that, so literally no storage. In fact, we have to rent a storage facility in Weyland. We'd really like to get out of that, and that's not inexpensive. So this would solve that if we get that approved. And we did meet with all the neighbors, so I've talked with every one of them, and everybody's good. And the reason of, you know, the second reason why to bring the garage back just a little bit further from the house, that 50 feet, is because our neighbor actually uses that part of the driveway to turn around and stuff like that. So it actually keeps his accessibility to be able to maneuver around a little bit. It keeps it better for him as well. As far as the overall height of the building, that stuff, it really isn't keeping with the neighborhood, other buildings, garages, all that kind of stuff in the area, similar in size and height. So it doesn't look out of place. The style of the home, of the garage is really similar to our house, so it kind of matches good and all that. So anyway, that's... I think that's kind of it. That's what we're trying to do.
Well, let me ask a series of questions. Your existing home is about 1,400 square feet. Would that be fair to say?
Yes.
And so this garage is going to be, you know, about 65% of the size of the existing home. Is that about right?
I would guess that to be correct.
Okay. And you're going to have a second floor?
So...
Yes?
It does have a storage area and a little playroom above it, yes.
All right, so you're going to have a second floor, and that second floor will have a full floor, is that right?
Say it again.
A full floor.
Yes.
And when you say that this is a proposal for 924 square feet, is this just based on the first floor?
Yeah, just based on the garage itself, yes, 924.
Just the first floor?
Yes.
Not the upstairs? Okay, so let me stop you here because this board has taken the position for many, many years that if you have a full floor above an existing floor... when I say full floor, not the kind of attic where you have to play hip-hi-hop to the barber shop.
Okay.
Across beams. If it's a full walking floor, you have to count that as part of your square footage.
Okay.
So we need to get an idea as to what the square footage would be for the second floor. And if you're not prepared to give us that tonight, we can always have you come back and you can give us the statistic.
I am. That was... the top floor was 798.
798.
Yep.
787? I'm looking at one of your second-floor plans.
Oh, yep, I see that.
Are you including the deck in that?
I did not include the deck.
And I wouldn't either, Jim. Because that's outside.
Okay. I'm sorry, you're correct, 787.
So your request is really for a two-story garage that is going to be almost 1,700 square feet, larger than the one that we just had rather than smaller. Okay.
And how many square feet is your house?
1,400.
What else? There's a lot more to be asked, but I don't want to be the one asking it.
Is the, that first floor, is that other storage unit, it says with a pull-down attic staircase, so is that one playroom area truly all open and then just one half of, up above that is storage? I mean, is that, I guess is that 787, like, all playroom, like, all four corners?
That, that floor is the 787.
Okay. And then, so the extra storage is above that?
Yep.
So that's almost a third floor.
Yeah, it might be.
So that would be considered?
It's a pull-down attic, yes.
Now, when you pull down?
We, we kind of figured that, take advantage of that, you know, the way the trusses are open and all that is.
And go up and have storage up above? Okay.
Is that a walking floor on the third floor?
Uh, no, you don't really have the headroom floor. I think it's about 4 and 1/2 feet.
Is it a, a solid floor, though? Or is it beams?
It's beams.
Okay. So unlike the second floor, which is a walking floor?
Yes.
Upstairs, it's hippity-hock to the barber shop. You have to watch yourself because you're kind of going over beams.
The wall roof.
Yeah. You don't want to do that. What size would the attic be in square feet? Give me a, give me an idea. I don't mean to be throwing you curveballs, but people many times come before us and they forget, they think it's just the first floor measurement, even though they might have second and third floors.
It's, I, I think it is limited because the way the trusses work, the trusses don't go all the way over to, like, with the edge of the foundation.
You're talking the attic now, right?
Right, comes way, way in.
So what would you estimate the size of the attic to be? Just give me an estimate.
8 by, um, by half, what, 8 feet? So I'm saying 125 square feet.
And we know this is just an estimate.
Um, I would assume you're, excuse me, putting in electricity?
Yes.
Um, what about any plumbing?
No, no.
Okay.
That certainly isn't the plan.
Okay.
No, no.
And it's, it is 100 feet off the, the lake?
It, it is. It's a little bit further than that. So we're, I think we're at least 10 feet outside of the buffer zone.
Okay. Yeah, I saw that on your map. I was just confirming.
So that would be what, 110?
110.
Can I ask, do you have to go before, like, the Board of Health because of where you're going over, where your separate tank line goes out to the leaching field?
Yes.
So you're going to have, so you're going to have to move that, or?
So I, I did talk to him about it. And what we have to do is, that's a, they call it a forced mean. We have to relocate that.
Okay.
And no special plan, no special approval. He said, when, when the day comes when we go to move it, just have him out there and take a look so we can see it before it gets backfilled. But it's really, it's a 2-inch piece of 40-schedule PVC.
Okay.
Yep.
How large is your lot?
Say, I'm sorry?
How large is the lot?
Uh, 25,000 square feet.
Water's in back, but there's woods in back, too, correct?
Yes.
And can you tell me from looking at this, Ms. Mello, how far back from the side yard he's going to be?
15 feet, 6 inches.
That's sufficient?
I think detached, yeah. Because I think Rob would have noted it.
While she's looking the neighborhood, they have garages this size?
Yes.
They have two bay doors in the front, is that true?
Yes.
And there's a regular door in between the two bay doors, is that true? And you're going to have an exterior staircase, which would be built on one side of the garage, allowing you access, if you go up that staircase, to the second-floor playroom, right?
Yes.
You're going to play up there?
Yes.
And you're going to have a deck on the second floor. So the stairs go up, you're going to have a deck area there where you can hang out. And there will also be a door on that side that you can walk in.
Yes.
And through to get to the playroom on the second floor. Do I see that right?
Yep. And just so, while we're talking about that for a second.
And before I, before I use this, hold the thought. And the pull-down attic stairs would be on the second floor where the playroom is? Or the pull-down stairs going to be on the first floor?
There, there where the playroom is.
So that would be a second-floor pull-down for the attic?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt you. Go ahead.
So, on the stairs, the plan shows it as, I forget, like, 11, 12, 13 steps, something like that. It's a pretty good rise there. And the way we're suggesting that this could go, it actually fits into the hill, this is a, that fits a little bit better, so we may not need quite as many stairs. And thinking, all that we get here and the more tired our knees get, the less stairs are better. So, if we can move that over slightly and take advantage of that, we don't need as many steps.
What's the height of the proposed garage?
Uh, 27 feet.
And the height of your house?
Roughly the same. I don't know exactly.
Would the garage be taller than the house? Would it be higher?
Because it sits on the land, it probably is. But they have the same pitch roof and the same, really, wall heights, so they're very close in overall height.
So you're telling us that the garage would be 27 feet high in the house when everything is considered with pitch and the roll of the land, 27 feet, too?
Really close to that, yes.
And the parking that you say is off-street, is that true?
Yes.
Does the garage, does the driveway go up to the garage? Or does it go up to your house and then you have to walk over to the garage?
Yes. So, it, it goes up to the house, there's a little bit of a walkway that gets us into the house, and, and then it's all driveway right up to the garage.
Okay. So it forks?
Yes. Yep.
Can I read this?
You may, of course.
So, what it says is, "A permitted one-story accessory structure may be located within a rear side yard, provided that it is not located within 10 feet of the property lot." But this is a two-story. And, so I don't know if that would change where it's noted as a two-story.
Well, it's definitely two stories. So.
Can I maybe just ask a question? Because a, a one-story with a 12-pitch roof is really about the same height as this structure, right? So a two-story to me, and I, I don't know enough about it, but a two-story to me would be a full eight-foot wall. This is, this is more of a dormant roof.
It's two stories. It's two floors.
It's two floors. You count the walking floor, there's another floor. I understand where you're going with this, but, no cigar. So, how much would he need on the side yard if we look at this as a two-story?
30.
So you're going to need another 15 feet per side yard.
Is it possible to move it? I mean, I see, like, your, your map here. It looks like you've got plenty of space. Is there a way to shift it to the 30 feet?
Let me consult.
Would you have to take down any trees?
Ms. Dahl, I see that Mr. Barrington is running up, is influencing you.
Yeah, that's a good point. It helps the stairs a little bit. That's a good one. Yeah, so this.
I'd like to do a sidewalk on this.
When are you planning on starting construction?
Really like to maybe start pouring the foundation late October.
Okay. Look, it's the policy of this board, because we're very courteous with each other and appreciate each other, and I think you get a feeling for that. That if one of us wants to do a sidewalk, we ought to do a sidewalk, even though some of us might not feel like we need to. If one does want one, then we all go along and we do it generally on a Saturday morning. And we'll get it done within the next week or two. We'll decide on a date right now. And we'll also decide on a return date for you, because we like you, we'd like to have you come back. So, let's table this discussion right now. We'll come back to it. Is there anybody else that wants to be heard on this proposal? Ms. Dahl asks an excellent question. Is there, I, I know you're going to need to consult and look at the map and turn things around and see how it works for you. If it doesn't, it doesn't. And you go with this as, as presented. Anybody to my left wish to be heard further? Mr. Barrington? The wheels are turning. Can't you tell? What do you say?
I had a talk, but I, I lost listening to you.
Ms. Mello, anything further?
No, just when we do the sidewalk, I'd kind of like to see the boundaries. If, you know, if you decide you're going to leave it where it is.
Stake them.
Stake in the ground.
Just put four stakes, okay? We think the building's going to sit here.
I see. Okay.
Can you do that for us?
Of course.
And that way there.
So, I'm sorry, where do you want me, do you want me to stake it at the 15, 6, or at the proposed sort of 30? Because I know that's.
Wherever you think you want to move it. So if you want it to sit where it is right now, if, if you go home and you look at your topography and you're like, eh, I really think it'd look better where, where it is on the plan, then stake that.
Okay.
If you think you can move it, because you're going to have to ask for a variance if you leave it where it is, then stake that. Okay?
I understand. Yep.
And also, if you can twist and turn it so that you don't need the extra 15 and 1/2 feet off the boundary, then let us know in advance so that we don't come and visit you on that Saturday. You just let the planning department know, here's my new, new plan, here's my new drawings, and, you know, we've moved it, and I don't think I'm going to need the extra 15 feet.
Okay, can I, can I ask a question then?
Of course you can.
I know you're a little bit naive here, but.
Of course.
If I, if I say okay to the 30 feet, because I can, I know in my mind right now, moving at 15 feet really doesn't impact it all that much. In fact, with Patty, who's going to my wife, is it probably helps the stairs up a little bit? Does that allow us to not do the site visit and all that? Or is it, you really want to come out and see it because of the side setbacks?
Your request.
I want to see it because I want to get an idea of what your current house looks like.
Okay.
And what this structure is going to look like sitting behind your current house.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay? And your current house, I think you said, was 1,400 square feet. This structure is larger than your house. So, yeah, I, I want to see.
So we jump?
Yep.
Okay. So forget what I said before about twisting and turning and getting the 15 feet so we don't have to come. Be happy to come. And now let's talk about a, a date that works for everybody. Mr. Barrington?
I'm good on this Saturday, the 5th.
And Ms. Dahl?
Yeah.
And Ms. Cullum?
I'm having surgery tomorrow, so I will be unavailable for probably the next few Saturdays.
Well, you're going to have to change your surgery.
Y'all feel free to do this one without me.
I'll take the pictures while you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Mello?
I'm good with Saturday.
Okay. And typically, we come in about somewhere between 9:00 and 10:00?
Yep.
Do you have a preference? Does anybody have a preference? Mr. Merritt, do you have a preference? 9:00, 10:00?
You pick it. It'll be the.
Let's do 9:00.
Let's do 9:00?
Yes.
Yes.
You have to go to the gym after that, I know.
Well, by doing enough laps around his property, I'll be all set.
Yes, you will. So 9 o'clock, and what date is that? That's October what?
October 5th.
10:05. I think the curveball that was thrown here tonight is the fact that we have to count the second floor. No question about that. We don't feel as if we have any discretion on this. And how it got past the planning department and was calculated only to be 924 feet or whatever it was, and they didn't mention the existence of the second floor and that needed to be counted to, I don't know how that happened. But it's happened, and now we have it, and we have to make it right. So we're not going to bother you too much. I ask that you meet us out there.
Of course.
I don't eat donuts, but maybe the others do. But anyway, 9 o'clock on October 5th. Do the staking to the extent that you can. Think about how you want to twist and turn to see if you need the extra 15 feet or not. I would prefer that you tell us no. Because as I said to the previous petitioner, we like to look at these plans with an idea towards minimizing any violation of the bylaws. And right now, you have two, based on the proposal. You've got the side lot issue, and you have the size-size issue of the structure itself. So if you can eliminate at least one of those and then satisfy Ms. Mello and the other members up here as to the actual structure itself and what you want to do, we should be able to get back and have a final vote on this at our very next meeting, which we should schedule now, so he knows.
Yep.
Now, I can tell you that there are no other cases right now in the queue. Things tend to get a little slower this time of year because it's getting colder and building projects, you know, we see a ramp up during the warmer weather, the spring and the summer, and then in the fall and winter, obviously, it starts to tail off. So, we should be able to get back here fairly soon and consider this. What do you say, Mr. Barrington?
I'm willing to, to go with the end, end of this month, 23rd?
Ms. Mello?
I'm fine with that.
Ms. Dahl?
Depends on surgery.
And Ms. Cullum? You still going to be having surgery on the 23rd?
Recovery.
Recovery.
I, I think that works for me.
In all seriousness, don't, if you need more time, tell us now.
Yeah. Because if you don't come, that means a full member board. It has to be unanimous. So we're better off setting it out and having a full board.
Yeah. So you tell us.
Can we do Wednesday, the 30th?
Yes.
Yep.
Is that, what's Halloween, the 31st, right? The Halloween, the 31st? So, 10:30 for the next meeting. Does that, is that okay on your schedule? Watch the website. We are not down here in this room very often anymore. Usually, we're upstairs. So. It'll be.
So did I.
It'll be the same time. And Mr. Barrington will wear another spiffy shirt, and we'll have another nice conversation and figure out what we're going to do and hopefully vote on this, one way or the other. And if it's a yes, then there'll be conditions, like you heard from the other case. If you're going to be changing the plan at all, if you move it around, twist it and so forth, you need to do new drawings. All right? We need to see those. We need to see those. Because they've become part of the official record, and the planning department is guided by those drawings when they... Before they issue the actual permit. So, we tell the planning department what it's gonna do. We're kinda like the boss over the planning department. But when it comes to time to do the nitty-gritty details and sign off on the permit, they have to have the actual plans to look at, to make sure they're not doing something that we did not vote for. Okay? And that's happened before. People change plans after we vote, and then they go into the planning department, the planning department, the building inspector says, "No, no, no, wait a minute. That's not what they voted." And we've had that happen a couple of times in the last year or so. So, make sure that you have a final idea and a final plan that we can look at. That's all.
That's for the 30th, please?
Yes.
That has to have a final plan?
Yeah. No, I wouldn't ask for it on the 5th.
Okay.
The 30th. So, that should give you... No, it's almost a... I was gonna say almost a year, almost a month. How's that? Is that okay?
I think that'll work.
Good. Again, it's nice to see you. Thanks for coming tonight.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm out of the hot seat.
You're out of the hot seat, and we'll see you on Saturday at 9:00 o'clock.
We'll go to it.
Hopefully, the weather will be good. Now, we have another case. One more. This is case number 59-1-10-R, and the petitioner is Ronald LaPlume. Is Mr. LaPlume here? You want to assume the hot seat?
Yeah, can I contract that come up to?
You're gonna have to have two hot seats. And you have filed a petition, Mr. LaPlume, seeking a special permit and/or a variance in accordance with Sections 2245(c), 2320, 5221, 5222, and 5300, and Sections following of the Carver zoning bylaws. Again, just for bureau knowledge and the knowledge of people who are still in this room and people watching at home, the Carver zoning bylaws are our local laws. They're referred to as bylaws, but they are our laws, just like we have state laws and federal laws. These are Carver's laws. And these laws relate to property located at 3 Atwood Street in Carver. Is that where you're gonna be doing this? This is at Accessors Map 59 Lot 1-10-R, and this is to construct a 30-by-40-square-foot detached garage. 1,200 square feet is the size that you're proposing?
Yes.
700 square feet, as you know now from listening to us, is allowed as of right. So, you're five... You need 500 feet, 500 feet of relief. And apparently, the need for approximately 9.9 feet of front setback relief. Is that true?
Yes.
50 feet is required under the bylaws, so you have roughly 40 feet?
Yes.
The subject property is located in a residential agricultural district. By the way, Area 58, everything good with the video?
Yes, it's...
Good. Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight, by the way. All of this is being recorded, so people can watch it again at home, although I don't know why they would want to. But be our guest. So, who wants to present, or do both of you wanna take turns? Okay.
So, they're looking for the accessory structure of the garage, the 30-by-40 garage. Due to a hardship, they've got an existing two-car garage that they're in the process of converting into an in-law apartment for his parents. They're losing the usage of that. Parents are getting up there in age. His mother's here tonight, she broke her foot about a month ago, and the dad has trouble walking because of a bad bag. So, they're looking to park his two vehicles in there and their two vehicles in there to keep them out of the weather.
This is gonna be a four-car garage? Am I hearing you right?
Yes.
And your existing garage is a two-car garage, is that right? Which is gonna be converted to an in-law.
Correct. So, the proposed garage is two overhead garage doors in the front, as you can see down in the plan.
Yep.
I believe the roof line is under 15 feet.
Well, you need space for four cars.
Me, my wife, my parents, my work truck, and my 16-year-old just got a stomach, so...
That's five. Did I just count right? That's a lot of vehicles. Wow. And do you have plans already made up for the proposed in-law?
Yes, they're all submitted by the department, I think.
And have they come back with any suggestions or indications of problem?
Nope.
How many square feet is the in-law that you're proposing?
It was 768 square feet or something.
You're gonna be doing that, too?
Yeah.
Do you see height on any of these plans? I don't... We don't see height.
I sent them to Jill, because I sent her... The original set didn't have the height on it, and I sent her the second set that had the height on it, so I don't know what she did to that. Now, I... You still have an email on my phone?
The in-law plan was already approved by the building commissioner, so we're only looking at the garage. Okay.
So, like, one's... They're two different permits.
Yep.
Well, you moved this thing back, right? It was...
Yeah.
The corner of this was in front of the house.
Originally, it was like a foot and a half in front of the house, and the original floor plan, that one...
Well, you're able to... You're able to move it back.
After the board helped, we got to move back the extra side feet, whatever it was. We gotta put up a big Bavaria behind the slab on the new garage for the board health agent.
Yeah, you're within five feet or something.
Yeah. It requires 10 feet, but he said we can go back if we want to try.
Okay.
There he goes, blessing on that.
Now...
So, they said they recognized this as a two-story, just because of the height of it?
No.
With the grade?
That's why we had to drop the roof line, so we could be the 10 feet off the property line on the right side.
Okay.
Is there a second floor?
No.
Is there an attic?
That's all that exists, no.
Is there gonna be indoor plumbing?
No, outside water spigot, but, I mean, they put a heater in there down the road, but nothing now.
That's heating. Any plumbing, though, inside that you're planning on?
No. It's not as if I can get a bath, 16 or anything, but...
So, this letter that was given to us as part of the packet from Mr. Palmer says that the overall height from the average grade is greater than 15 feet.
Cannot be greater than 15 feet.
It says that it is.
Says it is greater.
That's what the letter says. Let me read it. "The overall height from average grade plane to the structure ridge is greater than 15 feet. This causes the accessory building to be recognized as a two-story structure, thus increasing the side setbacks of 50 feet from the front line and 30 feet from the side and width." So, I need to know what height this building's gonna be in order to eliminate that concern with the side lot lot.
Give me a second. I think some of the plan, Joe should have had it, you guys should have had it here tonight in front there.
Yep. But it's... We can only look at what we have.
This layout, 2D layout that was in our packet says 11 feet tall. And it looks like this was printed out on 8/26/24.
Good, thank you.
Yes, so the document you were reading was from June 21st.
Yep.
Yeah, that's... I think that's an outdated one, yeah. And I have a note here, short, "Two plans."
Yep.
Yep.
We do. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It was decreased from 15 feet tall to 11.
No, originally, it was 17 feet tall, and it was decreased to just under 15 feet. Because we couldn't be over 15 feet, it would be the 10 feet off the sideline. I've been going over this with Rod for over three and a half months.
I believe you.
Okay?
This says 11 feet tall.
I'm a state local inspector, I know the zoning bylaws. To tell you, it's been a struggle just to get in front of you guys here with this plan, okay? I've bitten my tongue many a times, okay? So, I made sure I crossed off my Ts and dotted my Is, and make sure you people have what you're supposed to have here tonight.
Okay, so...
But this plan says 11 feet tall. So, if we approve this plan, the structure can only be 11 feet tall.
Correct.
Okay.
So, the plan that was submitted, it's the same exact-sized building, evidently, okay? If we were to write in hand on that, it should not be more than 15 feet. It should be able to be voted on tonight and approved or disapproved.
At 11 feet tall.
It was submitted at 15 feet tall.
I don't have anything that says...
Our paperwork says 11.
15 feet. I said that what we do have is something...
What was the date on the letters? I'll try to look back.
Okay, so the date on the letter where it says it's 15 feet, and it was that's considered two stories, is June 21st, 2024. The date on the plan, which we would use as the as-submitted plan, is 8/26/24. And it gives your... It gives the structure as 30 feet wide, 40 feet long, and 11 feet tall.
A 30-by-40 is correct, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, it's the height that is confusing.
Mm-hmm. And I just don't wanna approve the wrong thing.
Because if you approve it as that, then you can't do the roof as that.
Right, if we approve 11 feet, that's all it can be, is 11. Yeah.
Can we take a five-minute recess, so I can get a hold of the...
Sure. I'm sorry.
No, a couple of weeks ago, I let her take over. Ever since, she's had this power trick going. We will suspend for five minutes to 8:20 PM. Thank you. Back on the record, then, Zoning Board of Appeals, October 2, 2024. We are coming back from a five-minute recess to allow the contractor in this case to pull up some information for us concerning height.
There's the photo right there, if you wanna pass it around. 13'9".
The peak is 13'9"?
Yeah. We couldn't be more than 15 feet, so we ended up dropping it.
Thank you.
I trust. I trust you.
Then neither, you wanna take a picture? See a picture?
Yep, that's... I'm good, yep.
Thank you. Now, the bylaw reads the 15 feet is from the finished grade. That's why we dropped the building to the 13'9", because it's gonna have eight inches of sill down to the finished grade.
You satisfied now on the height issue?
That's why, when I talked to Rod, I said we wanted 15 feet, that's why we dropped it to the 13'9".
Because of the grade? Because of the grade?
Well, it's been frustrating, sir. It's been over three months to...
Try to get it in here.
Yeah.
So, I would just make that one of the conditions.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry for the...
I don't wanna, you know, approve these plans, and then you can't go higher than 11.
Yeah.
So, let me see the picture of the proposed construction again. That's the back.
That's the...
Those two bay doors, right?
Yeah.
Is there another door somewhere over in the back, a side or a side door?
Two-way door on the left side, with a window on the left side.
Two bay doors. And one side door, right?
Correct.
And did you tell us approximately the height of your house?
The house is 17 feet to the peak. It's a raised range. There's actually an existing driveway on that side of the house, right in front of the new garage. I think it shows it there on the plan as well.
It does, yep.
So, that's on the right side of the house.
Yeah.
So...
And the...
Right here.
I don't see anybody here, but the neighbor on Purchase Street, had they... I mean, I see there's a stockade fence that was there.
No, he doesn't... I talked to him. He's fine, but he's got his camper right up in his front.
Yeah. There's trees there, too.
I did a drive-by this morning.
Yeah.
It was closed, so I said, "Oh, we got a case, I'll take a look and have an eye gear in my head before..."
Yeah.
I'm gonna leave that tree there, too.
I had that written down, "Tree removal with a question mark."
See, I was... I wasn't joking.
It's a beautiful tree.
It is a pretty tree.
Yeah.
I'm gonna start writing it up.
Yeah.
And look them down in the garage.
So, is there any dimensional relief that needs to be granted?
Yes.
No, from over here?
Oh, front. I'm sorry. They are correct.
And you'd need how much in the front?
9.9 feet.
That's what I thought, too.
Yeah.
So, is there any way that you can move this back so that we don't need to grant a variance?
To answer that question, we already moved it back five feet from where it was existing, proposed.
Is there any way that you can move it back further so we don't have to grant a variance?
Could you go on the other side? Could you go on the other side?
Well, there's a leaching field back there.
You can't go on the inside of the house, there's a wall over there, there's power lines.
Yep.
Right, yeah.
And there's a...
Yeah.
Reason I ask, and you know this, Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Laws allows us to grant variances on one or more three conditions: soil, shape, or topography. If you think of this case, because it's a leaching field back there, we can phrase it in terms of which one?
Soil.
That's right.
Thank you.
Mr. Barrington? You have anything to add?
No, I'm good.
Ms. Doll?
No. I'm good.
Ms. Cullum has something she wants to say, I can tell.
I do not.
Do you have anything further you wanna add?
No.
Now, remember, we're taking a snapshot tonight. If we grant this and we condition it as we traditionally do, you're not gonna be able to change it unless you come back before us again. You don't wanna do that. Okay? Especially since your contractor is impatient, wants to get this thing going.
No, no, I have nothing to say.
Yeah. I've been wanting to move since April.
You are impatient?
I am. I am.
Okay. Does anyone else have any further questions? Any additional questions?
None here, no.
This is... There is no second floor. So, we don't need to count that. This is 1,200 square feet. 9.9 feet of front setback relief is what's needed as a variance. So, this has to be phrased both as a variance request and as a special permit request, which is why it's phrased that way in the actual petition. You're seeking a special permit and/or a variance. So, if no one else has anything further, does anyone in the public who is still here have anything they'd like to say to us? You have said plenty already. You don't apologize to me. Young lady in the back, anything?
No.
Okay. If there's nothing further up here amongst the board members, I ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're gonna do our findings, and then we'll vote on each of these individually. Is that okay? First, the board finds, or I suggest that the board find, that the benefits of the proposed use outweigh its detrimental impacts on the town and the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and the proposal in relation to that site. site.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Okay, and this is fancy legal language you don't really need to be concerned with, but it's the language that undergirds our decision, it's the foundation for it. Next, I suggest that the board find that the proposed construction is not substantially more detrimental than any existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, those two findings relate to what we need as a foundation to grant a special permit, but there's something else you need here, too. And that is a variance. So, I suggest that the board finds that owing to circumstances relating to circumstances... That's repetitive. The board finds that owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape and/or topography of the structures or lot, but not affecting the district generally, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship to the petitioner.
So moved.
And his mother-in-law.
Mom.
Mom. Relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. Now make your motion.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
So those are our findings, this is the foundation for our decision, and now I ask for a motion to approve the request of the petitioner for a special permit under Article Five, Section Fifty-three Thirty, and also for a variance under Massachusetts general laws, chapter forty-eight, section ten, for a dimensional variance of ten feet.
Perfect.
And that this is granted from the Carver zoning bylaw, section twenty-three twenty, owing to the soil conditions especially of the lot, because if you push back, you're in your leaching field.
Yeah.
So you need the ten feet. Okay? Do I hear a motion to grant the special permit and the variance in this case?
Motion to grant.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
It's done.
Thank you.
Now, there are conditions. First of all, on a Friday night, you have to invite me over for whiskey. Now, this will be subject to the plans of record, and also subject to no plumbing, no indoor plumbing, we talked about that, right? And not to exceed thirteen point nine feet in height. These are the three conditions I think I heard everybody talk about. Does anybody want to add anything to that? What about lighting?
Yeah, you should probably put in there that it has to meet the approval with the board of health, right? They have to do that inspection for the five feet?
What do you mean, for the five?
Yeah, so, yeah, does that have to be included in ours?
Okay, so a condition on board of health approval, as needed?
Yeah, before we backfill, they want to see the numbering.
And what do we usually do with lighting? That it has to be...
Those down-facing?
Down-facing.
Down-facing outdoor lighting, right?
Yeah.
You're gonna have lighting inside the garage?
Yeah.
Yes.
There'll be a light on the side door, two on the front, and a front light in the back.
And inside? Anybody want to add anything else?
No.
I have a question. So you're saying you're approving it with the plans, I just want to clarify this, the thirteen nine, and not the plans that...
The plans that we were given are eleven. I, we need to make sure that that is noted, that the plans received, say eleven feet in height, approval is for thirteen nine.
It'll be done, because you're gonna like this.
Well, I just didn't want to go up there.
Yeah.
And I have to back down here.
Yep.
My feet are getting tired, I just have my knee replaced.
Anybody want to add any other conditions?
No, not me.
Ms. Doll? Mr. Barrington?
No.
Ms. Millip?
I'm good.
So let me go over these again, so we're all clear, okay? These are gonna be subject to the plans of record with the understanding that we're allowing the height to be up to thirteen point nine feet, and not the eleven as recorded on those plans. So everything else with regard to the plans, you follow, except for the height, which we're gonna give you the thirteen point nine feet. Next, subject to board of health approvals as necessary, and there'll be no indoor plumbing, and the outside lighting will be down-facing, you will be allowed to light the inside. And, that's what I had written down. Does anybody have anything else that I did not cover?
No.
I do not.
You had no indoor plumbing.
No indoor plumbing.
No indoor plumbing.
No indoor plumbing. But you can have a spigot. Anything else, gentlemen?
So you already voted, you found approval?
We haven't voted yet. But I'm asking, is there anything else?
No.
Okay, everybody heard those conditions?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt those conditions?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, you're good.
I have two questions.
Nope.
You don't want to do that now.
Can I go off the record with them, or...
Nope. We're very much on the record. This meeting is being live streamed.
Well, all right, I guess I'll ask them now, then. My question is, where was the ball dropped on the plans that were submitted from me, the department upstairs, to you guys? Because every other town I do work in, I will get a copy of them back stamped saying what I'm going to the meeting with. I didn't get them, and I asked for them multiple times, and just didn't get an answer.
Okay, well, I can answer that for you.
Okay.
We don't know.
Thank you, thank you for being honest.
Yeah, I am being honest, and I'll tell you that I...
We get our package.
I'm being sort of glib about this, but our policy is not to have any conversations or anything to do with anybody in the planning department until we get a case. So we put a wall up.
Yeah.
Right? And that's so that nobody can ever say that we are influenced by the goings-on at Town Hall. And there's always goings-on in Town Hall and their conversations, and we don't want to be persuaded or influenced by any of those until we hear from you first. So where the ball, as you say, might have been dropped, might have been dropped, I don't know, and probably because of what I just told you, that we are absolutely adamant that we will not have anything to do with what's going on with any of these cases during the application of petition stage, until it comes before us on the night of the public hearing.
I was just curious.
Okay, so now you know. What else?
My second question is, I know we gotta wait the twenty days until next Tuesday.
Yeah.
I still have the right to submit my plans upstairs, he just can't approve them until the variance is approved.
Well, we approve the variance tonight.
No, I'm saying it's recorded.
Right, right. Recorded, he won't be able to give you a building permit. Yes.
So give you a little speech, we shouldn't do that, because we like to hear it.
Okay. So the decision will go upstairs by no later than Tuesday or Wednesday of next week.
Yeah.
Twenty-day appeal period. Once that appeal period is over, you can go pick up the decision.
Yeah.
You'll take it down to the registry of deeds in Plymouth, and have it recorded.
Yeah.
They'll give you paperwork, bring that paperwork back, and you'll be able to get your building permit. So hopefully by the end of the month, you'll be all set and ready to go.
I can say one thing in relation to the question you asked first. The building commissioner has been out on disability leave for a few weeks now. I don't know whether that had any effect on things.
Yeah.
And again, we don't inquire, do we?
No.
We have never inquired about any of these cases ahead of time. And that's why for thirty years, just so you know, for thirty years, we've never been reversed by a court of law. This has got to be a record in the state of Massachusetts, and that's because we're really smart. No, it's not because we're really smart, it's because we play by the rules.
Wicked smart.
Wicked smart. Well, these people up here are very intelligent. So thank you for your patience. Congratulations, thank you for your patience, I hear your frustration. Nothing I can do about it.
Yeah.
Except what we did here tonight.
Yeah.
Which is what you wanted in the end, anyway. I'm sorry it's taken you so long.
I'm sorry.
And it's nice to see you, Mom, and you are...
My wife.
You are his wife, so calm him down now. Everything's good. And she helped you find that thing on the phone. So, very helpful, I'm glad you showed up. And thank you for, as I said before, thank you for your patience.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good luck.
Enjoy the full house of grandbabies.
I know. There's six of them.
Yeah, don't forget that whiskey.
That's awesome. I know some good stuff, too.
I may be ringing the bell one night. Okay. So those are, those are our cases for this evening, and now I want to inquire whether anyone has any business that they would like to bring up at this point, or whether we're good to consider suspending for the evening, adjourning for the evening.
I do have two things that I would like to bring up.
Okay, Ms. Cullum?
I was curious if we could change the time that we meet from seven PM to six PM? We always meet at seven, and I'm just curious if we could take it down to six?
Do you have a compelling reason for this?
I like sleep.
She's still...
I leave for work at six.
You leave for work at six?
Yeah.
Yeah, she's gonna be up early.
Let's have a discussion about this, because this is, what we do is going to depend necessarily on room availability, too.
Okay.
And of course, Mr. Poirier, who's not here tonight, is very concerned about his schedule, as we know.
Oh, it's, you know, it's dark by then anyway, so he's not golfing.
That's true. But he's got some other things going on, too. So, without getting into any of that, I think we have to make inquiries to space.
Sure.
Because Town Hall has been, is very busy tonight, I think there are about three different boards meeting.
Really? There was nobody in the building when we came in?
Those dates must have been moved, because I checked the...
Room one was...
Oh, you checked the meeting calendar?
Yeah.
There was nothing upstairs.
Yeah, it was dark and shut down.
Okay, I stand corrected. The...
Well, I think we have to...
The meeting calendar online, though, sits something different.
Okay.
Mr. Barrington?
We have to stay at seven at this point for our next meeting, October thirtieth.
Oh, because we already told them.
That's right.
Right. I just wanted to put it in everybody's ear to, like, think about it, we can bring it up with Mark when he's here next.
Well, I would make this suggestion. I would be willing to designate Ms. Cullum...
Oh, gosh.
...as a person to make inquiry with our clerk, Jill, to see if space might be a And it doesn't necessarily have to be six, it could be six-thirty.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Now, for me personally, not to shoot this down, but, you know, frequently I'm working until late at nine o'clock at night. If you go by my house, you'll see the light on the window.
The lights are on.
Yeah, you know. So, I would prefer maybe six-thirty, personally. That will give you another half hour of beauty sleep, even though I know you don't need it. But those are some thoughts that I have on this. Anybody else have thoughts over here? Ms. Millip?
No, with stat. Down the end.
All right, Mr. Barrington?
I have no issue.
You have, you feel strongly both ways, do you?
I can do six, I can do six-thirty.
Yeah.
Or seven.
Or seven.
Ms. Millip?
I gotta be honest, I would love a six o'clock stat.
And Ms. Doll, I know you're working and working hard these days.
Yeah, that, I mean, that would be fine.
Okay. So, I guess the inquiry is about six or six-thirty versus seven. And then we'll have to coordinate with Mr. Poirier.
Mm-hmm. And see how he feels.
Who also is an early riser, and an early going to bedder. So he may not have an issue with this, but I don't know.
Okay.
Okay, what else you got?
The other thing was, I saw an article recently, and I have not done a whole lot of research into it yet, but, and I believe it was a state bylaw for the accessory to move up to nine hundred square feet.
Yep.
And I was just curious, like, what does that mean for us? Do we need to rewrite some bylaws? Do we, what...
Well, we can't rewrite...
Where are we with that?
Bylaws. But local bylaws will not be enforceable if they conflict with state law.
Right.
So state law is superior to local, federal is superior to state.
So the state would supersede us?
So the state law, if it's specific on this point, would control, even in the, even when contrasted with the local bylaw, that might be different.
So we wouldn't want to update our bylaws to coincide?
That's a decision that would have to be made by town meeting.
Do we not just do that at town meeting, vote to update?
There are some bylaws that were updated, but not the specific one that...
This one just came out, like...
Yeah, and she's right.
Yeah, because I think we talked about it.
She's right.
Yeah.
So, that's something that we can address going forward when we get one of these, again. They were within their rights to go ahead and...
Yeah.
Because it was, usually when there's an issue, it's because what people want to build is bigger than what our local bylaw allows.
Right. Right, and currently, our local bylaw is seven hundred, so people...
Yeah, and that's small.
Now it's moved to nine hundred.
It's moved to nine hundred square feet.
And that's still small.
It is, but...
But it's still substantially...
It's a couple hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good questions, thank you. What else you got? Mr. Barrington, do you have anything more about trees that you want to bring up?
No, I was gonna ask that one, because I'm...
Absolutely, I wasn't joking, I believe you.
I've seen that and been, how is that exactly...
And Ms. Millip, do you have anything you want to...
It's on us, because I've had people ask already.
Our current bylaw is eight hundred square feet.
Oh, eight hundred.
By law.
Yep.